Yeah, I read the book. The book was outstanding.
I call to order the monthly council meeting for the Maryland City Council, Tawnytown, for the month of June, and ask Councilman Frazier to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Observation, all council members are present and accounted for, and I want to apologize for being away on Wednesday. They had a business meeting and sorry I missed all the discussion. I want to thank our Mayor Pro Tem Diane Foster for leading the effort next last week. Appreciate that. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for May the 4th and May the 9th, and it looks like we've got an amended copy of the May the 4th meeting, so if anyone care to make a motion regard to the minutes?
I move to accept as amended.
Second.
Are that both sets?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. I just want to remind all the council members that if there are any conflicts of interest that appear with the agenda item, now's the time to make that statement. Does anybody have any apparent conflict of interest? All right. All right, resolutions, ordinances, and agreement up for adoption tonight is Resolution 2016-24, water allocation for June 2016. Care to make a motion to pass the water allocation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we have Ordinance 22-2016 Code of Conduct. Anyone care to make a motion regarding this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask you if I could read a statement about the...
Oh, certainly.
It'll take a few minutes if that's okay?
No, you may.
I've titled this statement Thoughts and Support of Ordinance 22-2016 Code of Conduct. As was discussed on Wednesday night, our nation's constitution guards the rights of states to conduct their affairs as they can, and states further guard the rights of their communities to handle their own affairs as they can. In Maryland, our state constitution, through home rule, guards the rights of our community, Tawnytown, to conduct its own affairs as it will. As Alexis de Tocqueville once noted, "America functions community by community", and many in our community have determined a code of conduct is in its best interests. There were several concerns discussed Wednesday night relating to the pending vote on our code of conduct, which I seek to address further now and to add for consideration a few more thoughts to the discussion at large. First, the issue of free speech. It has been contended that an elected official, given the awesome responsibility of speaking formally on behalf of the city as a whole, should have the right to say whatever he wants about the city, and that to limit what he can say is an abridgement of free speech. To this, I respond that all freedoms require careful and responsible exercise in order to be sustained. When we officially represent the city, we are not just speaking for ourselves as individuals or a council. There is something greater beyond ourselves, and that is an entrustment. When we are formally speaking, we are speaking in trust for every person who lives and works in this town. We are speaking on behalf of thousands of people who depend on us to make responsible choices in how we represent our home to the rest of the world. Edmund Burke noted that society is a compact between the living, the dead, and the unborn. The freedoms which we exercise now that we have inherited from the dead depend upon our responsible choices to ensure the lives of the living and the lives of the generation who will one day take our place. The way that we represent the city is how the world will deal with the city. Consider, for example, how President Obama, after his election in 2009, went on a tour of various countries in which he stood as the official representative of the United States of America. He took the opportunity to speak negatively of America, something which drew condemnation across the political spectrum and which excited our nation's opponents. To exercise a responsible restraint in such a situation is not an abridgement of free speech, but a guarantee of the freedoms of those one is charged with representing and ensuring that they, as a whole, will be respected and treated justly by others. Consider then an employee of any given business asked to officially represent that business at a convention show or college job fair. What good does it do the business for an employee in an official capacity to speak negatively of it? What people would want to join such a business? What people would want to do business with such an enterprise? We must consider that Tawnytown is like a business, and our official representation will determine who chooses to live, to work, to develop neighborhoods, and to begin businesses here. The freedom of the people of this town depends upon our just and responsible exercise of our freedom in an official capacity. Now, that isn't to say at all that an elected official cannot speak freely on any subject negatively or positively. Indeed, an elected official, speaking anywhere as an individual, can say whatever he wants so long as he does not imply or state that his opinions are also the opinions of the mayor, city council, and city at large, especially if they are not. There is no abridgement of freedom of speech here but merely the cause for clarification to ensure the rights of others. My freedom ends where yours begins. And what we are speaking of when we speak of representation in an official and formal capacity, such as at a convention or commencement, is not the same as individually speaking for ourselves at will. To speak in an official capacity bears the responsibility of certain necessary conditions, such as refusing to speak negatively of the place we call home in order to serve the thousands of the people that we represent. To speak in a formal capacity is a voluntary act, which requires the honoring of such necessary conditions as a fulfilling of that act. If one does not wish to honor the conditions of formal representation, one need not volunteer to formally represent the city. Consider it in a distinct way. If one chooses to play a game of soccer, one is bound by the rules of the game of soccer. If one takes out a loan from a bank, one is bound by the rules of repayment. If one chooses to drive a car, one is bound by the rules of the road. If one chooses to formally and officially speak on behalf of the city, one is bound by the rules of the code of conduct. Second, the issue of disciplining. It has been contended that the disciplining of an elected official for any reason by any means is unconstitutional. So let us take the example of Congress. As Jacob R. Strauss, analyst of the Congress for the Congressional Research Service, notes in his report for Congress, "Enforcement of Congressional Rules of Conduct and Historical Overview of February 23, 2015, the U.S. Constitution, quote, 'vests Congress with broad authority to discipline its members.' Since 1967, both houses established formal rules of conduct and disciplinary procedures whereby allegations of illegal or unethical conduct may be investigated and punished." What sorts of disciplinary actions are prescribed for violations? In the U.S. Senate, for example, quote, "A uniform set of potential sanctions were established for rules violations that are to be used alone or in combination." These sanctions include financial restitution, referral to a party conference, censure, and expulsion. In the House, discipline has, quote, "included expulsion, censure, reprimand, letters of reapproval, and letters of admonition." As Strauss explains elsewhere, pursuant to Article 1, Section 5, Clause 2 of the Constitution, quote, "Each house may determine the rules of its proceedings, punish its members for disorderly behavior, and with the concurrence of two-thirds expel a member." Why should the Constitution apply to Congress and not to us? We are accountable, no matter what level of government in which we serve, to the U.S. Constitution, our state constitution, our city charter, and especially to the people we are charged with representing. Third, it has been contended that the code of conduct will remove the rights of an elected official to speak with city employees, to critique their work, to pass judgment on them, or to speak freely about them. To this, I respond that nothing prevents an elected official from speaking to an employee at all. An elected official may, of course, speak of concerns and issues, but these must be handled through proper channels. It isn't a denial of rights for the elected official, but an effective and professional way of handling such concerns. What the code of conduct also does is to protect the rights of city employees to do their jobs without fear of politically or personally motivated intrigue or reprisal. It ensures that the directives and the bearings of this body will be carried out orderly and effectively through a system of structure, and it ensures that employees do not find themselves unwillingly drawn into contentious situations. Our employees, from the treasurer to our maintenance workers to our police patrolmen, serve citizens of Tawnytown on a day-to-day basis in various capacities and have no political motivations in how they do their jobs at all, and that is how it should be. This allows for the professionalism and high caliber of the services provided, and the basic daily services which our citizens enjoy should likewise not be subject to or dictated by politicking. On a final and personal note, the vast majority of people I have listened to over the past few months regarding our proposed code of conduct have mostly expressed their thoughts on it in one of two ways. Either they are surprised that we did not already have a code of conduct, or they are glad to know that there may be a code of conduct because for them, this is a way to help ensure ethical behavior, transparency, and accountability. As Thomas Jefferson noted, constitutions, the powers they devolve and the rights they protect are intended to, quote, "bind down those whom we are obliged to trust with power." Our code of conduct serves as a check on our power, and so we can disagree without being derisive. We can be passionate without being personal. We can stand on our convictions in an ethical, transparent, and accountable manner, bound down as Jefferson would describe, because at the end of the day, the people we serve and represent to the rest of the world, the living and the unborn, will hold us to account. Thank you, and God bless.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else care to have any comments regarding the code of conduct?
If I might have a floor. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate a few minutes also. I've prepared a statement. There are a couple reasons why the council should not vote today to pass the Code of Conduct bill. I got a copy here from the desk here, and it's 11 pages long. The copy that was, I was given back on March the 9th, it's in my book, is nine pages long. One of the reasons is because I do think this will, I told Brad, I told Councilman Lance, that I thought that this would result in a future of bickering between council members because it gives new powers to council members to fine other members between $5 and $500 for things that they view are code of conduct violations. I don't know whether the public is aware of it, but this is a third of a trilogy of efforts to restrict councilmen from doing their job. The first one was a, what I call the Incumbent Protection Act, which restricted illegally and unconstitutionally, in my view, the ability to spend money and have the freedom to do so. In town elections, then, an astounding charter amendment that 1,200 people that signed a petition against to allow them to vote other people off the council. And then this piece of legislation, which is astounding also, is now 11 pages long. But there's two reasons why we should do that, and at the end of my talk, I'm going to make a motion to table it until some of these problems that can be solved. First, all council members took an oath under the Town Charter, Section C 104, which states, and I remember saying this just a year ago when I was elected, I said, "I will be faithful to bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and the laws thereof, and that I will diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute my office according to the Constitution and the laws of the state," end quote. And we all have done that when we took position, this position, on the city council. The Town Charter is the law for council members, and it's the authority by which we act. I believe the phrase that we discussed Wednesday, that a lot of the frivolous legislation is based on is that one little phrase that was mentioned about how we can make certain rules. I believe those rules apply to our council business, not to any old rule you want to make up regardless of how it affects the state constitution. The same Town Charter, Section C 209, provides the law for how an ordinance should be adopted, and it states an ordinance cannot be passed at a meeting it was introduced. You can imagine the difficulty. If people could introduce this legislation, town people are at the carnival tonight, I just came from the carnival, and they wouldn't know about it. If you could pass it at the same meeting that you introduced it, that would be definitely problematic because lots of things could go on behind closed doors if you did that. It says an ordinance cannot be passed at the meeting it was introduced. It must be passed at least six days later. It also says, these words, and these probably have never been read at a council meeting, but I know the charter and I've read it, and it says it cannot be passed after 70 days from the date of introduction. The only exception in the charter that I can find is that when a town council votes that there is an emergency and declares emergency, then this charter provision can be overridden by a vote of four to one. First, the code of conduct was introduced on March the 9th in its original form, and I brought the papers to prove that, and I hope the council members will agree with me on this, that this is problematic, and vote to table with me in just a moment, this legislation at least until another meeting. First, the code of conduct was introduced on March the 9th, and that's the 96th day. The law, the constitution that you swore to uphold said you cannot pass it after 70 days, but this is the 96th day to pass, and so according to the law, which I was sworn to operate by, I cannot vote for the code of conduct tonight, and I certainly would vote against passing it in violation of the law because it cannot be passed today since it's beyond the 70-day limit. Okay? Secondly, and probably more interesting and compelling to me about following the law that Councilman Vigliotti reminded us of some of it tonight, the current code of conduct was revised. I sat here last, on Wednesday, and looked through the paper that I have. I have a nine-page code of conduct in my book. When I was issued the book, on March the 9th, it was about nine pages. I got this and counted it. It's 11 pages now. So secondly, the current code of conduct was revised, and it was revised since it's been introduced on March the 9th, and it was revised in what I think is an illegal manner. It was revised not by amendments and votes and seconds at a formal meeting, but behind closed doors, they put things in that they wanted to put in and change things and put amendments in, and this is something I'd like to see stopped where the laws that were given in the book come back to us with a lot of changes you all decided to make that I don't know anything about or wasn't notified of. I'd like, I think it's unconscionable that you'd even do it, but it certainly happened here. It says the ordinance was revised outside of proper procedure. The way you revise and introduce ordinance is you make a motion and seconds and discuss it in a real, when you have real open government, you discuss it, and then you make motions and second and amend the ordinance, and then you adopt that. It said the ordinance was revised outside of proper procedure in legislative process where amendments are introduced, discussed, and voted on for adoption, all in a public setting, all with due notice, and required by the open meeting laws of the state of Maryland. Another thing that we said in our oath that we would support, the state of Maryland Open Meetings Law, and operating outside of Roberts Rules of Order. I've been the president of the Trius Republican Club for years, back in the 80s, and it was founded in 1964, and we've always agreed to operate under Roberts Rules of Order, and we certainly did that. They all require that, as does our charter, that those things are done, motions, seconds, and amendments. This ordinance before us was revised behind closed doors and brought to us under the pretense that it's the exact same ordinance that was introduced on March the 9th, which I, it clearly is not the exact same ordinance because it's two pages long, they fixed some things, they get to supermajority, but we didn't do that properly. And it says, it's a newly revised document, which I believe the proper position, permission, you could introduce it tonight if you wanted to, after we table it. It's never been introduced, this document that you got on the table here has never been introduced, and the constitution of our town says it has to be introduced. Six days later it can be voted on. Okay? It's never been introduced, this one that you got tonight has never been introduced. Okay? Which cannot be passed to us except six days after tonight. So it's illegal to vote for it tonight. It's improper because it breaks your oath of office to vote for it tonight because it's been 96 days since it was introduced. And it says newly revised ordinance by persons unknown cannot be introduced today and passed today. So if you all do that and pass this ordinance today, I think you violate your oath of office that you swore to uphold. And it's my, without debating the merits of why you'd want to give other council members $500 fining authority, why in the world would you want to do something like that and create a future of bickering on the city council the rest of my life? I don't know why, but I would say that a responsible thing would be to follow the charter and the law of Maryland and second my motion to table. So I'm going to make a motion to table this until next month.
We've got a motion and a second to, for the passing of the code of conduct. I can't entertain a motion to table now, can I?
Yes, you can. Motion to table is still in order.
Is there a second on the motion to table?
You can discuss it when you make a motion second.
You need a second.
Is there a second, is there a motion to second, or second on the motion table?
My fellow members, on the council, compelling argument for mistakes that were made in bringing this before us tonight?
All right.
How can you be 96 days old? How can you be 11 pages instead of nine pages?
Done.
Can somebody speak to me about that?
We appreciate your opinion. We know, we know your opinion on this.
How do you feel, I'm asking my fellow council members, how do you feel comfortable about playing fast and loose with your oath of office and?
All right. Is there anybody else who want to make a comment? In case I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the ordinance number 22-2016 Code of Conduct, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No. It's illegal to pass it tonight.
Four to one. All right, next we have an annexation resolution 2016-001A, Ballinger Park Annexation. Anyone have any, do we need to make any comments before we introduce this? Anybody care to make a motion to proceed with the Ballinger Park Annexation?
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we need approval for the special deputy sheriff's agreement between the Tawnytown Police Department and Carroll County Sheriff's Department. Anyone care to make a motion to accept this special agreement?
So moved.
For a second. Is there any discussion?
Angela, the police are all in line with this, like this?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we have the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing new since Wednesday.
Anyone have any questions for Henry on the city manager's report or the departmental Hearing nothing, we'll move into the legal report. Jay, what do you have for us?
Nothing new since Wednesday.
Anyone have any questions for Jay? Hearing nothing, we'll move into new business. Our first item is the monthly financial report approval. Anyone care to make the motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the accounts payable. Anyone care to make a motion to pay the accounts payable?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the accounts payable? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we have the recommendation to reduce the letter of credit for Meadowbrook. Is there a motion to reduce the letter of credit for Meadowbrook?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the consideration of electronic message display boards. Anyone care to make a motion regarding electronic message display boards?
Councilman Lance, I guess maybe if you could very briefly recap everything for us and explain what the board is looking for.
Right now, the electronic...
Oh, I'm sorry. So moved.
Message boards are, can we review that? I mean, it's...
I don't believe it's anything that we can really approve tonight. We're looking for guidance from the council.
We need to make a recommendation. Planting and zoning is way out of the...
That's correct.
That's right.
That they can proceed with discussion on this.
That's correct.
And then bring back a final recommendation to council.
Is that the motion we have?
Are we doing this by consensus? Do we need a motion?
Second.
Great.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Any other new business to come before the council? Hearing nothing, I didn't have a, an old business category, but I should probably ask, is there any old business to come before the council?
I brought up something that the last meeting didn't get addressed. I called the two property owners where we placed a sign for the petition. The city truck came, stole that sign through in the back of the truck, sped off. I called the property owners, asked if we should call the sheriff because the sign was worth about $100. I asked Henry whether he authorized that, the stealing of that sign, and whether or not, I didn't get any response from anybody at the local...
No, you didn't ask that question. That was after the meeting was over, but yes, the sign was...
Well, see, just like we closed down the discussion on the code of conduct without adequate comments on it, about the contents of it, we closed the meeting Wednesday without adequate time to address that. It's been the practice to bang that gavel...
I don't run the meeting.
And stop conversations here.
I don't run the meeting. I do not run the meeting. In any event, yes, the sign was taken. It was illegal.
There's a sign for the Tawnytown Carnival there. Is that a legal sign?
Yes, it is.
How is it illegal?
That sign was political and did not have authorization.
So you ordered the removal of the sign?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just wanted you to say that publicly.
And if I recall, you said you may call the sheriff's department?
I asked the property owners.
Now, I ask you a question. Did you say you called the sheriffs?
No, I said that I asked the property owners whether I should call the sheriff, both the property owners, which I know both of these people, and they gave me permission to put that sign up there on private property.
The sign was illegal.
Sign is not illegal, but that's okay. That's your opinion. But it's not illegal. It's an inappropriate action. I want the public to know that there's a lot of political things going on behind the scenes, and that's one of them. We heard somebody say here tonight that no one would ever use the code of conduct for politics, but that's not true.
Anything else to come up before the council tonight? Let's move into council member reports. Let's start with Angelo. Do you have anything for us, Angelo?
Just another one of those. Tawnytown got the headline, but it wasn't Tawnytown. I believe it was last week they said that there was a response to a standoff in Tawnytown. There was a response to a standoff, but it was not in the city limits. Okay? One of the problems we have is, you know, just about anybody that has a Tawnytown mailing address, when it's reported in the newspaper, it's reported as Tawnytown. When a good percentage of the time, it's outside the city limits, and I just wanted to point out that this was one of those occasions. That's it.
Okay, Angelo. Joe, how about you?
Nothing this evening.
Diane, how about you?
I represent Tawnytown and the Maryland Municipal League on the Economic Development Commission, and the commission has recently revamped. We don't meet monthly. We meet kind of quarterly, but we had a good meeting. Commissioner Vance ran the meeting, and it was his idea for the structure of the commission now. But I just want to let the council, and Henry, you know that Jack Libor vowed that they would turn no business away because of lack of connectivity. So there is money for that, and I've let Nancy know that, and I'd like the council and you to know that.
Thank you.
Brad, what do you have for us?
The only thing I have is my appreciation of the council for electing for the planning commission to move forward on the message display boards. This is something that we need to bring into the present time instead of living in the past, and that's what we're going to work to do, and you'll see it come before you again in the near future. So thank you all.
You know, that's a never-ending job. It really is. It's, I can remember a few years ago, we had an ordinance that required metal trash cans. When was the last time you saw a metal trash can?
Hey.
Got one?
I'm professional wrestling all the time. I'm professional wrestling all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to ask folks to support the Tawny Town Carnival, which started tonight. I got my booth set up up there. What people don't usually know is that the, the restaurant is opened at lunchtime from 11:30 to 12:30, and you can call and call in your lunch orders and pick them up. They do a nice job of that, and you should call that number. I wish I had the number here, right here for the Greasy Spoon is what they call it. Little sign there, it's a lot of fun. I urge you to visit the Tawny Town Carnival. Also, I ask you to come to the 29th meeting of the Wrexham Parks. I'm the liaison for Tawny Town Wrexham Parks, and our meeting is on the 29th. You want to meet some of the finest people in Tawny Town that give without compensation their efforts to make a wonderful athletic program for our young people. You should come out and hear these coaches. They sit in these chairs here and give reports on all the major sports, and I've grown to love them and respect the work they do. They, they're upright next to my booth now at the carnival, selling, signing up people for Eagles football, and I'd encourage you to come to this, to the Wrexham Parks meeting and get to know these extraordinarily gifted and dedicated people that serve on the Wrexham Parks Committee as our coaches, assistant coaches, and team leaders. It is inspiring.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate those reminders, and I would like to remind everyone that this Saturday, the 18th, we feature the Wine, Music, and Art Festival in our park, which promises to be a very good day, begins at 11 o'clock, and we'll go as, the party will go on as long as you're there, I guess. One of my favorite local bands will be in attendance, the Nautical Wheelers, and I encourage you to bring your chairs and take in some good music. We also will have a special guest with us too, our next U.S. Senator from Maryland, Kathy Schalega, will be attending that performance, so if you would like to pick her brain on a few items, then I'm sure she'll be happy to entertain you at the, at, at the festival. So I was pleased to get a request that, that she attend. I can't really give a great endorsement speech, but I think she'd do a fine job. And coming up again before we meet will be our Maryland Municipal League Convention. Another, an addition, additional feature of the convention will be, Tawny Town will be featured with many, with several other Main Street Maryland communities at the exhibition hall, and Nancy McCormick will be staffing that, that booth and encouraging people to come take, take in our beautiful city. So I look forward to that, and I always look forward to the convention because of the, of the knowledge and the networking opportunities that are valuable, they're immeasurable, they're, they're opportunities that are not, not available anywhere else, and I just want to let everybody know that, that that's coming up in a couple of weeks, so. All right, anyone else with brothers to come before the council? Care to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, do we allow citizen comments at the end of our meetings? We have people here that have come to speak.
No.
We haven't been asking for comments.
At the Wednesday meetings, we do.
On Wednesday meetings, we.
So people come to the city council on Monday, cannot say a word while we vote on things.
It's not on the agenda on Monday nights. That is Wednesday evenings.
I think that's very rude. Why don't we just change that tonight since we have people?
It wasn't changed tonight, it was changed a while back, and you were part of the change.
Well, I didn't vote for that, to cut off, I wouldn't, I believe in open government, not behind-the-scenes work.
There was in front of you, and you agreed to it, now you're changing your turn. Usual, that's the way it goes, but.
You're not going to allow anybody to speak at the meetings tonight, you're going to adjourn the meeting.
I've had a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded that we adjourn the meeting, unless there's any other discussion. Anyone else?
Don't you fear people? I mean, this is rude. People come out, and they take their time to come to meetings, and you won't even let them talk.
At the Wednesday night meeting, we entertain comment, and that is for comment that'll be constructive towards our decision-making for the Monday.
That's one of the things we change. If people come to the meetings, sign up, and they have a chance to talk at the council meeting. I just think it's outrageous.
Thank you for interrupting me while I spoke. I appreciate that.
You go ahead, adjourn the meeting. That's what I expect.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry.
Usual.
I'll be happy to stick around and talk with anybody who wants to talk.